I think somebody's running a bit late. It's what it looks like. I go into so few meetings, I don't know where to start.
We're live?
I found that. Okay. Okay, good. Good to do.
Oh, man. I didn't know TJ will cook this, sir.
We already have two online. Chat pairing in a line.
Mac, I've started recording over here.
Okay.
But I won't do the audio until meeting starts.
This may be in camp.
Sure.
I just. Okay, I had to hurry, meditate myself. What?
Okay. Seeing as we were, seeing we were on the agenda, so we better.
I have some ideas.
Here's the ordinance.
So with this one.
Change our world. No, our world didn't change, dude.
Yeah, no idea.
Yeah, all he has in there is the county ordinance part that references the state code that we do. There was a couple of things that.
State code?
I have it.
Oh, that's the printer? Yeah.
It's just, I'm just saying, our, the county code, all it does is, it just references the state code that it's using.
Okay, are we printing for them?
You could. Cause then they'll know, I mean, that's, that's the state code. But like you say, all of our code references in this little two pager.
Yeah.
References, all that stuff. There's another portion too, it's, it's the administrative code R sixty-eight dash nine that is specific about the function of, you know, how to do it. This is like the administrative rules. So that's another part, that's probably, that's the law, but then there's another portion.
Yeah.
Morning, how are you?
Good.
Oh, gracias, G. I've been a drop down. I had to get ready to conduct the meeting, so.
I know.
Commissioner Harvey's late, so I have to do it. Thank you, G.
You're a good man.
He gets paid well. I make lots of rice pudding, so. And spaghetti.
Mitch wanted that. We. Treat my discussion, he's not here yet.
Want to shake in my hand or do you want my glasses?
Shake your hand.
Good morning. So. Do we go ahead and get started? What'd you think?
We could do, we could start with Tammy.
They're my favorite person.
This is Tammy, okay.
Am I your favorite person? Why?
I love this.
You love what I'm doing? Why? Is that a good or a bad?
How can we remove this?
Oh, Mac will do that.
Okay, I'll do that, so I'll wait for him to come back. So. We're having, we're coming started.
Oh, then I don't even have to be here. I'll sit back for my teaching.
Commissioner Harvey's a little bit late, so. Guess what? I get to do.
Hey, Bruce.
Do you know Lacy was coming to make a presentation today down there?
Yeah, it's her, Luisa, our grant writer.
Okay.
And Karen, our new planner.
Okay. All right, well, we'll just see her when she gets here, then.
We're not supposed to be there.
Nine? But it's all right. Between nine and eleven. We, we had her on at nine, but. But we moved another thing off and then.
Let me call her, cause she, I was just, that was actually another language.
She's on her way.
You called.
Okay. Yeah, she's on her way. We, somebody got ahold of her. All right, we're good. Thanks.
Bye.
Bye. Let's go ahead with.
Tammy.
Tammy.
So, oh, we're not gonna do the introduction. That we had to do.
This is working.
Yeah, but we don't have to announce anything.
No, just go through the on the agenda, just follow the agenda.
Okay. So, I keep practicing, you see.
Welcome in, and then roll call, and then write into Tammy.
Yep. It's recording.
Hold on, let me grab your. And mute, yeah. All right, it looks like we're in.
Next round, we're ready to go.
Okay. Um, here, um, here today, August eighth. Can you remove this, Mac, so I can see?
August sixth, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it just went last.
I don't know, I can't see, anyway, but, um.
It produced.
So today is nine, or nine, and it's time for us to get started in our work session meeting. We're called to order. We have Commissioner Adams here, myself, Commissioner Harvey is on the way, should join us within a few minutes and. Uh, agenda items, are we gonna start with Tammy?
Let's go ahead, we'll move to Tammy on item number two. Which is the presentation and discussion to, for the potential de-obligation of Federal Emergency Management Agency Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, that's a big old long word. Acronyms are easier. So Tammy, go ahead, we'll turn it over to you, if I can pull up your.
Okay. So.
Items.
Mac and I have talked about this a little bit, and I wanted to talk to the commission about it. Our grant time for this, um, our grant timeframe for this grant is running out, and it will require another extension, which could lead into another three years of carrying this amount on the budget. And we've had prelim, preliminary plans drawn up. Those have gone back to drawing at least two times, downsizing each time, and downsizing again. And to do that, it has to go back to FEMA for review, and we have to do another benefit cost analysis, which then ensues more time, more money. So, we do have another, um, grant that is in the process right now. That Mac has the, the map up there, it shows the Mill Creek and the Pat Creek watershed. And this one would be called the Lower Pat Creek Project. And it puts in a bigger, um, system to hold back the floodwaters. And so, since that grant is being proposed, and we're working forward on that one, I am suggesting that we de-obligate this FEMA grant for, um, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, that will take that off our budget line for twenty twenty-five. And I've already spoke with the state and FEMA, and they said we just have to send a letter stating that we wish to de-obligate the grant. We haven't drawn down any grant funds at this time. The problem is, is each time we look at it, it costs more than the grant allocation that they've provided us, and we've gone from two flood debris basins to one, one to even smaller than that, and we don't even know how much smaller it's gonna have to go by the time we get to the benchmark of the funding for this. So, that would be my suggestion. Do you have any questions for me as far as the grant and de-obligating?
Now, this, this whole project is about building one or two, or how many debris basins?
So, this project that we're talking about de-obligating, we started with two debris basins in the cutoff road. Right as you come off the, and it would be in the creek channel. And there were two debris basins proposed, and our engineers have already told us, let's go down to one. And then they told me, on that one, let's go down to this. So, they've already downsized, we've downsized three times. And we still don't even know if we're gonna meet the budget amount, and there's no room for more.
Another, uh, basin.
So the. Yeah, so there is a PIFR grant, they call it the PIFR grant, it's a watershed.
The lower Pat Creek, we didn't have in there before.
No, the lower Pat Creek is a different grant.
We had the upper and the horse creek and the north or mill creek.
Um, no, that's all a part of, that's all a part of the PIFR grant.
Oh, that's all.
So this is where we were placing these detention basins, so there's.
Okay.
In essence, there's three projects.
Three projects.
Had two, and then our other grant that we continue to work with is, is the main debris basin that we're focused on, and that's a, if you remember right, that is a five-year process as you go through it, and the county doesn't have to fund any of it, it's all federal funded. We don't have to match with anything, it's, but you do have to go through the process, wait the timelines, go through the design, and get everything in place with the federal government.
Yeah.
That project still exists, it still continues forward.
So you have three grants, and you're trying to go down to.
So we had two grants, two different systems, we're going down to one.
Okay.
One grant, one system, so there will still be a detention basin that we're working on. But this one where we have to match on this grant, this one didn't make sense, it doesn't make sense to have two different debris basins in the area. Um, we think that one will be adequate enough to slow the water down.
Yeah.
And so with that, we're asking you, let us drop our efforts on this project and focus solely on the FEMA.
So.
It, it makes more sense with the budget.
It's south or east of the cutoff road. So technically, this won't affect any of our road system in the area?
No.
You're okay with it?
I'm, I'm ecstatic.
Well, good.
We went, we went and had to dig the test holes for the company coming, and we, with all the cobble and rock in the bottom, that's why I think the cost keeps going up, is when they went in and did the survey, and they had to go down and auger down in the road, it's turned into a way big project. And so.
Okay.
Yeah. And there, there are three grants that are going on in that area, so you, you are correct, there's the, the project that we're doing within Pat Creek itself. And some of the work that we're doing there should help slow the, the flow, it should take some of the energy out of that. Then there was this one at the cutoff road. And then the PIFR, which is the, it's called the PL eighty-three, five sixty-six Watershed Protection and Flood Pretend Prevention Program. PIFR for short, just makes it easier. This one is a bigger, um, debris basin, and it will be north of the cutoff road. And the other one was south of the cutoff road.
So this doesn't affect any other department, other than possibly the road department and emergency management?
Mm-hmm.
Don't care if we kill all the weeds in that basin, aren't you?
Fine with me, less moving better.
Yeah, and TJ sat in on the PIFR grant meeting with us when we were going through the planning process as well, so.
I just wanna make a comment. Basically, you know, I, as a commissioner, trust your judgment, I know you know this stuff pretty well, and I just like, you know, glad that you can inform us so that we can make the right decision, and your whole team, Mac, you, TJ, you know, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I.
Tammy, this, this is long overdue, isn't it, Mac?
Yeah, we need something, let us focus our energy and time on, on the main one.
Do you think this will slow down floodwater in Pat Creek, Tammy?
In Pat Creek, in Pat Creek and Moab?
No, in, uh, down by La Grande, what do they call that?
Oh, where the gravel pits are, it'll, it'll help some, um. The, the problem that they're having in Moab is Pat Creek and Mill Creek meet together.
Together, right.
So, the last storm that they had that it went through town in Moab, I was there and I went out to Pat Creek, and all of our roads were above water except for Sunny Acres. So, just depends on where the storm flows.
That was intentional.
Yeah, so I mean, it's always gonna have water, cause it's low. But even, um, Desert Solitaire, where we've had problem issues, it was dry when I was there. So it just depends on where those floodwaters are hitting during that flood.
There was lots of water in this last storm, Commissioner Harvey and I went and saw a theater.
In, in the Moab one with the, the hail, yeah. It was.
With a river with ping pong balls on the, the main street, the hills. The hill all over.
Yeah, that's what they said.
Lots of water.
Lots of damage.
Good job, Tammy.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Lacy, Lacy's here.
Absolutely, yes, if you want, we can go back.
We don't wanna put pressure on you, Lacy.
Yeah, item one.
We just had.
You could never put pressure on me.
So first of all, I wanna apologize for being late, I think that there was an email miscommunication, and we read, there was one that said ten and one that said nine.
You have, you have between nine and eleven.
Okay, well, thank you guys for being so patient, and I apologize, that was not meant to be an insult to your time at all. Um, so, I'm here today with, uh, two of our new, with our new community planner and our grant writer, um. So first, um, we wanted to talk about transit, but then, um, I just wanna reintroduce you to these folks. Um, so to talk about transit first, um, as you may know, I was, um, hired originally at SEUALG to do transit planning and to do, help, uh, bring public transit to our four county region, so San Juan Grande, um, Carbon and Emory Counties. Um, as part of that work, um, it's very important to understand what stakeholder opinion and stakeholder voice, and what the actual needs of your community are, cause I could theoretically buy a bus, and then it's not gonna serve you properly. So I think, um, our goal in this is to understand, um, at a baseline, what you feel the needs are for transit, and, um, kind of get a direction of what you would like to see, um, from transit coordination and a three to five year transit strategy. And it's just kind of like a baseline, what you might feel the priorities are for that. And then from that baseline discussion, what we're hoping to do is to integrate that more, to gather both quantitative and qualitative data, integrate that with GIS mapping, and come up with a strategy that's workable and plausible for your community, that also helps you be connected, and your community be connected to the other three counties, and or beyond, um, within the next three to five years, and then a longer term, um, ten-year transit plan, so.
I think Sylvia's got one for you right up front.
Okay, I'm ready for it.
Tell them what you want, Sylvia.
I want my railroad.
I want that too.
Well, I'm working with a seven, seven county, uh, coalition. And we are working on a railroad system from the UNTA coming down to, um, the Price area where they can hook up and go whenever, whatever they need to go, and now, uh, this time is an allegation with the Supreme Court, and it, we were, uh, given opportunity to be heard. And so that's what the process we are going through. And we also have a possibility going through the legislature, um. So, I am a railroad kid, some people are army kid, I'm a railroad kid, in my country, Jalaza. Look, my husband's for the, at the railroad project from UNTA, anyway, so. I, I have a vision, if that happens, and I know that the seven county coalition have already been exploring the possibility, um, of being able to connect and be able to go through San Juan County, I think I know it'll be a process, probably, you know, take years, but as we have a vision, I believe things can happen if you have a vision. And I think, I see the enormous possibility. Every place I go in the state, there's, I see a train, and they carry so much good. And we talk about energy, you know, saving energy and, and all these things, green energy and all this stuff, and I think we can move lots of goods out of the county. Like with the UNTA, they have oil, but they also have cattle, and they only have one highway that goes in, and they're stuck there. So, we are keeping our fingers and our prayers going that this can happen, so it can help San Juan County, and I think it can help, you know, all the way from, you know, Carbon.
I agree.
It just can go in, I think about down south, you know, they do lots of sheep, and world is very, very have good opportunity for businesses, so I think the whole county can benefit. Over here with our weeds and all the stuff.
Where do you want your railroad to connect and go to?
Well, I'm not gonna tell the secret, all the secret, no, I don't know, I have been talking to the.
There's a railroad that comes into Potash.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I had, we had gone to the end there, and and there's lots of possibility there where they can connect, and, and it's in San Juan County.
Maybe go all the way into Gallup, New Mexico.
Yeah.
That's an excellent idea.
Yeah, and they, they have been, the engineers have been looking at the, all the possibility, which is kind of a cloud in the back of our mind as we wait, um, and I have a meeting this Thursday, and I decided to see when we meet, to see what's going on, and.
This is really long range.
Oh, but I love long range.
I don't think it'll happen in five years, will it?
Oh, no, I think the one in UNTA been going for, what, five or six or seven years, and so, but it'll go faster for us if we don't have to. If we have, you know.
I like big picture thinking.
Or whatever.
All we have to do is cross the Navajo Nation, that'll be easy.
Yeah.
If, um, I think that that's something that we've definitely been looking at as well, it's definitely more in the ten-year strategy, which it sounds like it is for you, um, as well, Commissioner. Um, I, I, I'm not sure how I can be involved, just because this is the first time I'm hearing about, it sounds really excellent, but if there's anything that we can do, I mean, off the top of my head, I think support that we could immediately, immediately offer, um, or think about, um, collaborating on is like grant writing, um, and looking what's out there, and seeing if there's GIS mapping that we can do, cause oftentimes, we have to do that, and then also stakeholder data gathering, um, because most of the grants will often ask for that, um, and if that's something that you want support on, I think that we would definitely be open looking at that with you.
I would say a year from now. We would have an answer, an idea about the Supreme Court, you know, we'll have an idea what. With a year or two.
Okay.
You know, and then I think we can work in this. The project, the UNTA project is private, uh, is supported by private investors, so. And they have a good partnership with the, the U-Trib, they're, uh, the, the railroad is going through the land, and they're very supportive.
Okay.
And so we just, I think we just need to start kinda giving the idea that can happen.
Definitely.
And, so, yeah, it'd be nice to work.
Yeah, anything that I can do.
Inform at that, so.
Please do, anything that I can do to support, I would be more than happy to do. We just, um, recently finished, which I, I believe this commission was aware of, was our market assessment survey. Um, and that has started to help us gather a baseline, and it might seem a little bit disjointed from transit, but the really good thing about, um, what that data has shown is kind of where people want to travel, what people want to do. Um, so that will help us when we, um, end up going and doing GIS mapping, or we're figuring out where stops are, we're, we're, um, contemplating your larger idea of having a railway system with maybe, um, rapid transit systems and mini buses and stuff like that to get people around, uh, cities, so I think that's really excellent, and I'm really excited that that's something you've been working on.
They make a solar train. In my country, former country, I grew up in Argentina.
Oh, wow.
They have a solar train. That, and so, it's a possibility with, even with the green energy to be able to use, but we have lots of coal, clean coal that we can use.
Yeah.
For, for their trains.
Yeah.
Along another note, Lacy, I think in the next five years, over the next five years, uh, I think there is a, um, a van that goes to Salt Lake.
Yes, the Salt Lake Express, yeah.
How far does that extend south of Monticello?
Um, I'm not entirely sure, I haven't mapped that for you.
Planning, so I wonder if we ought to explore maybe through a grand opportunity, taking that bus down to Monizuma Creek and to Monument Valley. But I think one of the things that you might wanna be aware of, sure, good thing you showed up, so I don't say the wrong thing. So, those people down there are certainly some of the poorest in the state of Utah.
I agree.
And we know that's fa, factual data, so I wonder if the grand opportunity would exist to, uh, take those vans or another van down to that area for people that might want, need to go up north for various reasons. And even, um, maybe offer a free bus ride for, for a year or two years or whatever, to get those people to understand that they do have transportation opportunities to the Wasatch Front.
I love.
Through a mini bus or something.
I love that i- idea, and I think it's incredibly important to ensure that we're helping our most disenfranchised communities first, and ensuring that they have equity, um, for transit, because we know that transit is connected to health, um, it's connected to social well-being, and it's connected to a number of other factors, which I think data has shown, um, Navajo Nation and White Mesa, um, do not have equal opportunity to, so I completely agree that, um, looking for a grant that, um, foremostly supports those communities is incredibly important.
Jamie, do you think people, if they found out that there was a bus that would take them up north and relatively inexpensive or at no cost, would they, would it take them a while to get used to that, or would they, would they do it?
They'd do it, I know a lot of them have medical appointments at the U.
Hey.
A lot of them see specialists up north, and biggest issue's always been paying for gas, it's expensive.
Transportation.
And then, and another thing.
I think in Carbon County, I mean, in Price, they actually have a program, they sell pies and give people a hundred dollars gas money to go up north, I, I don't know if they sell pies.
It's a good idea, everybody likes pie.
Raise money to help people that have cancer.
Okay.
Get to the Wasatch Front, I, but I would think, this is your mother calling.
It's Jerry.
Another thing, um, I was just, um, Imani Valley, USU is opening a new campus. And so some of the classes can be offered there, but I think we have a vast system going back between the two campuses, you know, they can go through the campus. It would be something that would be beneficial, I think. I, I had taught at the college for many years, and my students at the beginning used to hitchhike, and some with babies, from Monty Valley to Monty, but now they're headed on campus, so.
That's dangerous.
Economic development, or that economic mobility study, that was one of the things that we discovered here is, you know, as USU creates a lot of these internship opportunities, internship program, we tried, we're trying the same thing here with the county is, on these internship programs to get the Native American participants, they always have to have transportation component with it. Because they don't all have transportation means, they all don't have driver's licenses, and it's a mechanism to get them up from down south, up to USU, or even in to here in Monticello, when we worked with, uh, the Department of Work for Services, that was one of the things that they had mentioned here about Monticello, it was like, well, we only have one internship participant, um, we've got multiple off. Um, we've got multiple offices here in this building that could use an intern and use that help. But the transportation and those that had entered the program are all down south and they don't, they don't have the means.
Yeah.
And they're graduating high school without driver's licenses, and so then they go into. The college environment and that's still one of those things, it's like, we would, we would love to start these programs at USU, but we can't. Because now we've got to figure out a transportation component, so even having a, a local van.
Yeah.
Type shuttle system that, you know, hits bluff and Blanding and Monticello and and Moab. Just within the region itself, uh, would definitely go for it and definitely be utilized.
And the college has, um, a. Like about two, three month program for, where they have C T L program and. And they do it for, you know, you can certify for bus driver or truck drivers and different things and so.
Yeah, we just gotta get them there.
Excellent, so, um, I'm, I'm glad that this is the type of information you guys are saying, cause it was along the, um. The same path that I was thinking, so I'm glad that we're mostly aligned, but you've also brought some new information to me, which I appreciate. Um, I think the, the baseline of how, um, it would be beneficial to assist all of these communities and these needs. Is to do some data gathering, um, I think, um. That's, that's definitely possible, but I think sometimes where, um, it can be a little bit difficult is in, um, ensuring that. We're speaking to the right representatives, uh, in Navajo Nation and in, um, White Mesa, but also within the community. Um, because we wanna make sure that we're getting the right information, we're going about gathering that information in the right way. Um, and when you're so fresh into it like I am and you don't necessarily have, um, the community connections to do that. I think it would, um, something that would be really additive to doing that, um, and we would be able to hopefully share the data with you. Um, and everything once it's analyzed, um, is getting some information, maybe not today, but, um, in the future about. Who you might think would, uh, be the best individuals or communities to reach out to, to. Start to gather that, and the type of data that I'm talking about, just so, um, you're aware is like. How far do you have to travel, what type of bus system would you want to use, um, if it wasn't necessarily possible to do free. Right away, how much could you afford for travel, how often are you gonna use, um, public transit, where do you need the stops to be? That kind of thing, um, and that's the kind of data that will make it so that we're more competitive, um, in. The grant process for some of these larger dollar grants, cause they, um, as I'm sure you all know, and it's, you know. Something that in rural regions we talk about so often is that, um, a lot of these grants are set up to assist urban places and in rural. It's can be so difficult to kind of meet the metrics that we need to do, and we found that through, um. Doing that data gathering and having a more quantitative, um, argument to any of the grants we do can be really successful, so. If it would be possible for any advice there, I would also appreciate that.
I would be glad to volunteer to have an in- an initial meeting where we can invite, you know, members of the. You know, like mayors and maybe, um, the college and some of the chapters. And just kind of brainstorm and Commissioner Harvey and I, and we are in the Navajo Revelation Trust Fund. And maybe a possibility that there, people can get, you know, vouchers for transportation, you know, so. And we can probably invite them, some of them, just to, so they, in the beginning, we can kind of brainstorm, because I just thinking. One way, but, you know, the chapters, um, understand better the. The Navajo Nation, Commissioner Harvey, you know.
Yeah.
One of the things we have, um, Commissioner Harvey cannot be in the same room together. And so, um, because of rules, but if we, I guess we could probably make, turn it into a public meeting, you know. So that people can come and stress and anyway, so I'd be glad to work with you and.
Well, thank you very much, that sounds excellent, and I think that that's a great first place to start. Is to have that brainstorming session and just see where the community thinks we should go from there.
Elaine, are you online? Do you have some, some input into this idea, Elaine? I know you've worked on it before.
I am, I was, um, I've been a big proponent of trying to find a way to get. Um, maybe regional jets, small jets, um, that would allow people to. I know when I was in Grant County, we started with an eight seater with Boutique Airline out of. Uh, Moab to take people to Salt Lake for appointments and whatever, and I think that's something that we. Because we're so far from the urban area that having a, an airport, whether it's. Blanding, I think, would be a perfect place if it could ever happen, to have small regional jets that would fly. To, you know, Salt Lake to take people up there for medical, whatever their needs are, but I think that. Um, should be something that could be investigated, and I think we've got a lot of residents that, that, you know, could rely on that. And it would be very helpful to have that service, air service.
That's an excellent idea, and we'll definitely keep that, um, and integrate that into the, um, long term strategy for the county and the region, thank you.
I, I know the city of Blondin is looking into, um, enlarging the airport. Um, the thing is, they have, they have some land, they have purchased from the U Tribe. The problem with the Blondin's airport is too close to population, so they need to fear away to. Move it away, you know, keep what they have by extended, so, so I know they're working on that, so, so we can invite them to, to come to.
That would be excellent, I would love that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. Well, um, unless there's any other input for transit, I think that that was all of, um, my initial questions and. From here, um, my next step will definitely be to reach out to you, Commissioner Stubbs, and, um, we can begin to start organizing. That initial meeting and start to get that data, and I'll definitely, um, involve the rest of the commission with that and ensure that everybody understands. Um, what the plan is, and I'll try to prepare some stuff to send to you.
Are you located in Price?
I am located in Price.
You are?
What building are you located in?
I go.
What's the name of the building?
Oh, um, it's named after this really cool guy, he wears a cowboy hat. I think it's like the Bruce B. Adams Building or something.
Commissioner.
Oh, it's Commissioner Adams.
I go to meetings every month, to the college meeting, so we can probably meet.
Okay.
And come in, and we can talk.
Okay.
I'm going Thursday, but maybe next time, next month, I can, we can meet.
Okay, sounds good, let's, let's figure something out.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks, Lacey, I'll tell you, we feel the love of that organization up here. Down in San Juan County more than any time I've been on the commission. We've, we've been receiving a lot more attention, so that, we appreciate it.
Good, we wanna give you all of the attention, we love San Juan County. So, if I can just use a little bit more of your time, Louisa and, um, Corinne, do you wanna come up? So I just wanted to briefly, um, have these two ladies introduce themselves, um. Louisa has actually been with the organization, um, for a number of years, but Corinne is a relatively new hire, um, in the last month or so. Um, so Corinne is our new community planner, she kind of took over my position when I moved into the role of strategist and. Louisa, um, is the agency's new grant writer, so I'm just gonna give them, if that's okay, a few minutes to introduce themselves. And kind of let you know what they have in store, okay.
Nice to meet you both again.
Nice to see you again, Commissioner Adams, and nice to meet you guys, uh, thank you so much for giving me the time today. Um, as you guys know, within Serta, we've never really had a permanent grant writer for this area before. Um, so my primary goal with San Juan County is just to strengthen these relationships, kind of find out what you guys need and want. Um, what you guys would like to expect from me and my position, what you would hope to see, um. How that benefits you guys down here directly, um, and keep those lines of communication just open. I hope that anytime you, you see an opportunity or have questions or, or, you know, anything like that, that you feel free to. To reach out to me or to Lacey or anyone at the agency, because we really, we really do love San Juan County, and we wanna see this, this community thrive, so.
Well, thank you, you probably getting lots of phone calls from us.
I welcome them, I welcome them, I really do. And then, uh, Corinne?
Yes, I'm Corinne, I'm the new community planner, um, I recently worked at USU Eastern with their care about childcare department. And got to come down to San Juan County, so I'm very glad that I am able to still help and support you guys, I love it down here. Um, but within my community planning role, I'm also over the revolving loan fund to help with gap financing for startup businesses or. For retention or expansion, and then also the community, community development block grants, so if any of your municipalities have any questions about that. Call me at any time, text me, email me, and I can help them get that squared away, we're gonna start with our how to apply workshops in October, so that's coming up soon that. They can attend, but thank you.
You know, we put this elevator in this building with C D B G money. We.
Nice.
Somebody was able to talk all three of the other counties into lumping it in one year, all of the money into this county and then. We, we let them divide it up after that, so. Worked out pretty good, didn't it?
Yeah, to get that bulk of money.
Probably be calling you two visiting with you when I come to, um, I'll come to your building and talk to all of you. Anyway, but, um, one of the things that I try, you know, I work with the community development. Here in San Juan County, and one of the things I, because we, our population is diminishing. In order to attract, um, you know. Outside people, sometimes people come, they find a job, they can't find a, cannot find a home, but if they find a home. They feel like there's probably not much things for them to stay here, so I've been working on a few project, one. Been trying for a year, it's a splash pad and it came to a point where I think I had the full support from the, from the city of Blondin and. And so there's several things that I've been kind of working on, so I'll contact you and also. I have been working on childcare, so I'm sure you have answered for that, so, thank you, all of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amazing, thank you so much, and, um, after this meeting, we'll, I'll make sure that you get both, uh, Corinne and Louisa's contact information. So you can reach out, um, as needed, okay?
Just, just real quick, uh.
Of course.
Feedback for Lauren in regards to what you can do to help support San Juan County. Um, we used to have, uh, um, a heat program, not a heat program, yes.
Yeah.
And, uh, the weatherization.
Yes.
Um, it's, it's in a way kind of disappeared, uh, for lack of a better word. So I think if we could make it a little more visible down south towards. Uh, Navajo Mountain, uh, Monument Valley, Mexican Water, Red Mesa. Aneth, um, it would be very, very helpful. Um, when there was a worker, uh, who was stationed in Mexican Hat. It seemed a little more accessible.
Okay.
But, um, I think the buildings still used, but no one knows who to contact. And, you know, I know it's available by internet, but, um. A lot of the folks that need to access internet don't know how to utilize it, even on a phone. Uh, and so we're kind of archaic that way still, and we're used to. Going into an office and seeing someone face to face. And I think there's a little hesitation with giving information over the phone as opposed to in person.
I can understand that, it's into, I don't even like sharing it, so.
And so if, if there would be more visibility, maybe more, um. Uh, just, uh, maybe a dr- a drive and eligibility or.
Okay.
Or, uh, a day and a time where you come out to the local chapters and say, we're here. We, we provide, uh, weatherization and heat, we want to help, we're here to help you complete those applications. Uh, it would be valuable.
Definitely.
A lot of the elders, um, are used to that system, it's kind of archaic, but, um. They're used to the one on one, giving documents to people in person, knowing who they're giving documents to. And, and getting their, their information, eligibility documents compiled. So that's just a request, and I know there's a lot of initiatives, but if that can be, uh. A focus to be visible, to be out in the community, to be collecting those applications in person. Um, that would be very valuable.
Definitely.
Appreciate all the work you guys do.
Of course.
Finally.
Yeah, give it to me.
There was a mention recently of a group, grassroots group that actually went to DC.
Oh, United to get today's stronger tomorrow.
Something like.
U T S T.
Where they, they ask for federal dollars to, to get, uh, funds. To people who purchase or invest in, uh.
Heat pumps, was it, I think?
Solar powered systems.
Yeah, was it, I think it was the community justice grant through, I wanna say EPA, something like that, yeah.
Yes, and so now I think they allocated specific funds for Native Americans.
That's correct, and they're grand.
Like an allocation.
Yeah.
And so now there's the discussion on how do we disperse those across the state to Native American. Um, folks who are interested in that program. Um, I think that's gonna be valuable, again, it's all about visibility and, and being out in the community. Um. There's a lot of, I'll, I'll speak from this point of view, there was a power outage not too long ago, was it in June? Where Monizuma Creek was without power for about four days.
Wow.
And they're on the N T U A grid, um, and so there was talk of how can we prevent this? And, um, I think one of the solutions is, um, if we can have, uh, households have solar powered. So that if there is an outage, they're able to.
Yeah, they have that backup.
They have that backup. Um, not many folks are technical in that way, and so there's that support, but, um. I know there's talk about where the allocation's gonna go, um, there's, there is some vendors. That are companies in, in the community that are interested in being part of, considering that whole setup. For communities, but I just wanna mention that, it's all up there somewhere.
And have you been in contact with U T S T, or have they been in contact with you?
No one's spoken to any of us, um, I just happened to hear this. Through word of mouth, and it caught my ear, because if I'm not mistaken, it was quite. A, a, a significant amount of funds for Native Americans within the state of Utah.
I'm just writing this down, cause I wasn't aware, sorry.
So if that can be brought to light, that would be awesome.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, you're, don't.
A couple of things regarding to what Commissioner Harvey alluded to, um. You know, yeah, they are afraid to give documents, but if the chapter, like we are in the. In our F, uh, committee, and there's plenty of money for them to do housing. So one of the chapter took, took applications, got together with the people, took the application. But they got to shred it because they cannot have files in the chapters, so it's like. It's a revolving door, I mean, so the people sometime. It takes a while to get together and do that, and so they're trying to figure out how they can move these files, they have. Lots of money that they can use and we can approve for them to do things in the community, but the system. Where they had to do application and they cannot have those application on file, they had to be shredded, so that's. So that's one thing. The other thing is.
Sorry, what, and what, and.
In any program.
In any program.
It's supposed if we go there with a program and say, okay, we, here we're gonna help you, you know. Do the whatever, request for whatever fund, whatever. They cannot collect those files, and so it it is. It's kinda hard to kinda work with that system. And the other one is, we were talking about. There were several programs that they can get solar panels and things like that. One of the problems, they were talking about having somebody. They can serve those. They need people trained within the community that can service install those panels. And so that's another thing, maybe we have some grants that we're trying to train people in different things. Maybe we can do a grant where we can do a training. You know, for things like how they, to maintain solar panel and install and check somebody they can. And also for well testing, testing the water, it'd be nice to have somebody that can be trained for that. So maybe grants like that.
Yeah.
They can help them with the community. Thank you.
Definitely, and we can um, try and find some grants and I can work with Luisa to try and find those. I don't know any off the top of my head right now, but that doesn't mean that they don't exist. Um, and if they don't exist now, it's something that we'll put on our radar and even try and integrate in other grants as they come up. So thanks for bringing that to my attention. Um, and Commissioner Harvey, in relation to what you said in regard to heat and weatherization. Um, I I'm, I know that you know this. I'm not over either of those programs, but I obviously know the folks who run them. Um, and I am very happy to bring that feedback to them and then give you, either have them give you an update based on what can be done. To um, make a better impact um, in Navajo Nation and make a better presence and also make them aware that. Um, you feel that the community would um, be better served by having someone that's um, more regularly on site. Um, and I could definitely give them that feedback and either have them update you or I, or I can update you or another member of staff, but. Um, I will definitely bring that back and make sure that that's heard. So thank you for telling me that and sharing that information. Thank you guys so much, and I apologize again for being fifteen minutes. I feel so bad. I don't like being. Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, I guess we're moving on to number three. Tres, number tres.
So this is just uh. I looked at the Utah Code on uh, on the weed control and. Uh, pre- this is just preliminary. Yeah, but it's a proposed plan because of the interest in the weed control. Um, this first, a- and as I look at the code, um. There's some steps that have to be taken. So the first one is this notice of action. And uh, I've, I've kinda filled out a form here that. And and part of the problem is, I I don't, I haven't talked to anybody on the weed control board. Uh, I'm not sure who they even are, but. Are you? Okay.
We welcome you to our meeting.
Yeah, um. So I I need to get, sit down with you and 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 so forth. But, you know, I, th- this isn't to be passed today or anything like this. This is just maybe to get your permission to proceed. And to sit down and talk and and see what we can do, but according to the code, the first step is. Upon receiving a complaint from a property, from a citizen about a property, then the weed control goes. Board, a member, an employee goes out uh, on site and looks at the property. Um, and then if they find that there's noxious weeds on the property, they, the first step would be to send out this notice of action. And it basically says, upon inspection of your property, the San Juan County Weed Control District. Has determined that you have not controlled your noxious weeds from going to seed. Pursuant to statute, you have five working days to control or prevent this. So this is the first step. Uh, and then it also tells them what, what action needs to be taken. To destroy or control within five working days, from the date herein, all noxious weeds found upon your property. And to prevent them from going to seed. Methods of prevention or control include definite systems of tillage, cropping, use of chemicals and use of livestock. As may be acceptable to the county, and that's taken from the code. So that may need to be refined and looked at. Uh, then they actually list what noxious weeds they find on the property. Kind of weeds and how to destroy or eradicate. Um, I actually took this from Dolores County. Um, not the farm, but the, how to destroy or eradicate. They say spraying, we recommend Torron. Two, four D, curtail, milestone for thistles, so that again would have to. I think be refined after we we meet. Uh, mowing, this option is also possible if a future management plan is made. Again, that would have to be looked at. But anyway, this is, and and then also the weed district can spray for X amount of dollars per hour plus chemicals. Um, and if you do it, the San Juan County Weed Control Board would need to see um, receipts for chemicals. And then a notice, the the second page is, if you fail to control or prevent the weeds. Uh, within five working days, then the county can declare that property a public nuisance. Um, and if you don't take care of it after that, then the county can come on the property. And spray and seek reimbursement from you. So that would be the.
That's without their consent.
Right, right. So that would be the first, uh.
Well, let's explain your process as well that you already have in place.
Frank can explain it, 'cause we have that process. There was one question that we had. It says five days, but the citizen has ten days. To come back to the board.
And appeal.
And appeal it.
Right.
So we have five days, but they have ten days to appeal it. So where is that period? That we can go do it. We say five days, but then we give them ten days to appeal it. If you go on day seven and do it. And they have an appeal, that's.
Yeah, that that will be answered because there's a second step. So this is just taken from the code. So if you have five working days to do it, if, and and the only thing that happens after five days. Is the county declares it a public nuisance and then you go to this second one. And it's actually called notice of public nuisance. First one's called notice of action, this one's called notice of public nuisance. And it says, five working days have passed since this office mailed or delivered to you a notice of action. Requiring you to take action to control the weeds, you have failed to do it. Please be advised that you have five more working days from the date herein. To take the necessary action. In the event that you don't, then the county can come on your property. And take any action necessary to control the weeds. Um, in, and again, it restates, in the event that the county is required to control weeds, the county may seek reimbursement from you. The property owner or the person in possession. So you can go after the property owner or the occupant if if they're leasing the property. Um, in that event, the county shall send you a documented description of the expense for labor and materials to bring the property into compliance. And a demand for payment within thirty days. And you will be required to reimburse the county for the county's expense within ninety days. If the demand for payment is not paid within ninety days, the charges become a lien. On your property and are collected by the county treasurer at the time the general property taxes are collected. Um, and again, on the second page of that, basically, again, says what needs to be taken. What action needs to be taken. Um, but each of these also have the notice of appeal rights at the bottom. And pursuant to section uh, to four seventeen dash one eleven. Any person served with a notice to control noxious weeds. May request a hearing to appeal the terms of the notice before the county weed control board. Within ten days of proceed of such notice and may appeal the decision of the county. Weed control board to the San Juan County Appeal Authority. So.
Weed board, then commission, and then court.
Yeah, that. So, um, that's. I I I give them the, um, and then there's a certificate of service so that we, you know, just for the paperwork. So that's the two steps. Um, and then I also give you. The ordinance for noxious weeds. This, we had one in twenty twenty, and it basically. Uh, for the most part follows the code and is basically pretty good, but I think it does need to be amended a little bit. To uh, more clearly define what, a- and so I have done that. Um, doesn't change it much, but that's a copy of what the proposed new ordinance would be. And finally, the other thing I wanted to talk to you about, I think the. Measures are in place or will be in place to, for the county to, if the county has to go on the property. And take care of the weeds, for the county to uh, seek, if, and if they don't pay within the ninety days. Uh, then the county can, it becomes a lien on the property and the county can put that on their tax bill. So that's, uh, you know, that's, w- we can collect it through, through the property taxes. The only other thing I wanted to talk to you about was. Um, maybe setting up a, a weed control district, a special service district for weed control. Um, to do that, would would have to create the special service district. I don't know if that would include just all of San Juan County or how we would. Um, you know, how we would determine what the boundaries of the, of the weed control district would be. And then secondly, um, that would also involve going in and changing the mill levy. To fund the weed control board or district. And I don't know if there's a need to create a district, but that's a possibility.
I think, I think in in order, if we're gonna enforce this weed ordinance and. And make people do that, I think we need to do a, um, a mill levy. And provide funds to Frank for, you know, he doesn't have enough money to, to really do what he needs to do right now. And the only, the only way I see to, to get him enough money to do that is to get a mill levy.
Through a district.
Okay.
In a weed district, yeah.
And what would, uh. And and Frank could probably answer this better than anybody, but what would, uh, where are our noxious weeds at? What, I mean, would it be countywide?
I think we're trying to address those on private property. Uh, I don't know exactly, exactly how we address it on BLM or first service, you know, um.
So any private property in the county?
But any private property in the county is the only way we can assess a mill levy or.
Right.
Or attach a a bill to property taxes.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there are noxious weeds down on the reservation.
There are. There absolutely are. Yeah, or Arizona. So we'll, we'll have to take a look at that, how we can deal with that kind of a problem, but definitely there are. Especially in any of these drainages, water drainages, that. They get a lot of weeds in.
The way that's written, right now, if we did go spray, then we do have a way to get the money back. Whether it's leaning the property or they paying through their taxes if they don't pay within the ninety days, which goes to the individual landowner.
So, so I might recommend is, is getting with Frank and. And seeing what they've got in place and. Deciding what's best. Uh, but maybe implementing this. Um, kind of is not really a Band-Aid, but in the short term, implementing the, the ordinance and whatever.
Right.
We come up with here, but for a long-term solution and and not necessarily long-term, it's gonna take more time. To create the special improvement district, especially given the.
We wouldn't be able to collect anything on a mill levy this year.
No, right.
Cause that period's already gone.
Right.
That would be in a whole other year.
Yeah, and and my office is pretty busy right now, so.
Yep.
Frank, did you have a comment?
So Frank, explain your process that you already have in place.
Recently, I've sent out some letters to some landlords. Uh, I think I will do a change in the future, send certified, which I did not do. So at this period of time, I didn't give them a specific type of, you know, time you have to respond within a short period of time is basically what it says. Now, if they don't respond to that, then all that has to go to the weed board. The weed board needs to declare the nuisance, the way I read it. So once the weed board has declared a nuisance, then we can go back, file another letter with them, which will have to be served, you know, directly to them, giving them a certain amount of time. Which could be as little as five working days. Um, and then after that, we could, you know, theoretically go and spray, but there's a lot of roadblocks right into that, like who's going to spray? We do not have the equipment, we do not have the manpower or the ability to spray large fields. We would have to contract that out currently. I don't know how that would all work. So.
I, I don't see any.
Our weed board meets once a month. They're the ones that have to declare the the noxious issue, so. Can they declare noxious without actually having a formal meeting?
Well, I think, uh, it doesn't have to be the weed control board. Uh, it can be an employee that goes out and finds that there are noxious weeds.
So I can declare a. A nuisance.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it, you can.
I don't know, right to the hearing is, it goes to the weed board.
Yeah.
That, I guess, is the question is, we have a couple of questions. It says here, we can go on people's property to go check, to see. What we've been told. So one of our questions is, how much, is that legal, that we can go on somebody's property to look at it?
If, if you, if you follow the steps, in other words, the very first step, you have to, you have to either send by certified mail. Or hand deliver.
Okay.
Uh, this to the person, you, you have to wait five days. After the five, and it's gotta be working days.
Yeah.
So after the five days, yes, you can go.
Okay, so what if they refuse the certified letter?
Doesn't matter.
If if they refuse it, that's basically.
Yeah.
They acknowledge that.
It's the same as being received.
Okay, so is it five working days after they receive the certified letter or didn't, or refused the certified?
Uh, th- that it doesn't necessarily say, but I would say that you'd have to give them the benefit. So five days after receipt.
Cause we talked about, do we need to get a sheriff's deputy to go with us if we go on someone's property? Cause there are people that, they don't want you on their property.
Yeah, and I don't think there, I, I think that would be a good idea to just have a sheriff come along with you.
Could my idea for, yeah, if I'm going to property, I want a deputy.
Yeah.
Have they ever gone to that point?
No.
The noxious weed board, how do they?
They have, they just. They, yeah, they lost one of the appeals. Cause that's the thing is, so we, he goes and says, hey, you have a noxious, they can appeal it to the weed board. If they don't like the weed boards, then they can appeal it to the county commission. And that was one of the things that was brought up in commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. Was that by the time all the steps take place, the weeds have been seed, and now you're a year behind again. Because if you appeal it and do the process like it's written in state code, it could take you twenty-five, thirty days from start. To the final hearings, cause after they hear the commission, they could also appeal it to a judge, right? Which is another, I mean, you're ten, 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 by the time you're done, you're forty days into it, if somebody wants to appeal.
Then the wind comes and distribute all over the county. Then the wind comes and distribute it all over the county.
And so, but one of the things that we wanted to talk about is. The weed board, how do we put, can we put something together that says, okay, this is a list of vendors? That the citizens that we can hire, like, that we don't have to come in and get bids every time and say, okay, this is a price. Cuz there's three or four different farmers that I'll just say that spray. For other people commercially. You know, but like this time, you're me and Frank talked about, you're not getting any of them to spray weeds for you right now cuz they're all cutting weed. But we've actually gotten response from one of the letters I sent, and they are fully intending to spray their weeds. But they can't until the Louisas are done bringing in their weeds so that they can go do it for them. So there's there's certainly issues, but you know, they're dealing with the issue, so I I take them off the list, I'm not gonna take them to the weed board.
What what if what if we, I mean. Typically, can we do that in the spring, I mean, can we identify the noxious weeds in the spring and?
It's tough cuz they're not actually there yet.
But the sooner the better, huh?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And you gotta give people time to to do it on their own, too. I mean, that's the other part that you're running.
But but I I think if the county doesn't have the resource sources to go out and spray. Uh, I don't see anything wrong with contracting that out to somebody and then sending them the bill.
We just, the the reason I ask it is so, there's some conflict of interest, cuz some of our, our weed boards made up of farmers, ranchers, I mean, that's what it's. Supposed to be, so you've got people on the weed board that. Might be the ones that go spray, so that's why we wanted to try to get rid of a conflict of interest that. Not doesn't kick them off the list that they can go do it, but how do we go about saying? Okay, this is like a set rate, and if these guys will agree, they can pick whoever we can, you know what I'm saying?
Just because they have a conflict of interest, it doesn't mean they can't do it. They just have to declare the conflict of interest. Once the conflict of interest is declared. They can go spray.
What do you do about, I mean, that that takes care of the private, which is what, seven percent of the county? What do we do for with the Forest Service and B L M, that's where the streams originate, that's where these weeds are still there. On their lands, um, have you ever had a conversation with them, I know that they're.
Forest Service, B L M, quite often, in fact, we're, we have a contract with them, we talk to them quite a bit. Man, at this point, they don't even wanna spraying off-road. They've gotten so crazy about it because of some work we did in a certain area, so.
We might spray some endangered species.
This is exactly what they're saying. Historical, precious historical site, and and I'm all fine with that, but I mean, it's the middle of nowhere down along the river and. So yeah, right now, we're, I've gotta get some better answers from them before I can do a heck of anything for them right now, but that's just something that's changed recently.
I think that's also a challenge with this area is.
Ninety percent of the weed problem is probably, you know, on B L M, right?
Maybe we ought to go to the legislature or the attorney general and say. You know, part of ownership of property is taken care of it. With sixty-seven percent of the land in the state of Utah owned by the B L M. We're not taking care of the weed problem, let's sue them.
Well, the weeds aren't just in the road right of ways. I mean, and that's what they're like, this is where we want you to keep on these trails. And I mean, the one that we got shut down is on the the flood plain of the San Juan River. Which is where the weeds grow, and then we flood with the monsoons or whatever, and it takes the seeds further to California. It's like, you need to, we need to get rid of them here, but when they tell us. No, we're gonna change our policy and you can't go spray in this flood plain. Man, that tie our hands, anybody that irrigates off of the San Juan River, then it, you know. Like, whatever, wherever it ends up, them seeds make it, if you don't try to kill them before the hand, so. We've got, we've got some issues right now with the letter that we just received from the B L M. Because they don't wanna spray in the flood plains with our U T Vs and stuff like that, and you're not backpacking. The whole San Juan River trying to spray weeds.
Then we're gonna, we're gonna pass an ordinance not allowing any of their employees to drive on county roads.
Basically, what it is, is they went somewhere, they saw a lot of tracks, they saw blue dye. They didn't like it cuz they didn't know if it had been environmental impacts that had been done, so they shut it down until they do that. And that's, I would say, most of our grant money and their contract is all based on that land.
Uh, we can, we can take this to our congressman.
But yeah, we have a weed board meeting, so we'd love to get the things that you have, we can look at it, see if it's what we follow. And then take it to them and then bring it back to the commission. With the harvesting, they're currently, tentatively, they want it scheduled for August fifteenth, which is next Thursday. I'm assuming everybody gets their harvesting done cuz most of our members are, you know.
So they wanna have the meeting on August fifteenth?
Yes, typically, it's the first.
I think Mitch is willing to come to the weed board meeting and. Answer questions and.
Get your contact information before you leave.
Okay, anything, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you.
I'll be back, I guess, for the eleven.
Can we go into executive session?
You can, so I put it on the agenda, and so all we need to do is make a motion to enter into executive session, we'll. Sign out of everything, make sure completely logged off and.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session.